Public hearing, called order.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer.
Here.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilwoman Maynard.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Public hearing is for ordinance number 693. This is amending the CMC Title V, Chapter V, The Purchasing Limits. Anyone here like to speak on that? Here a motion to adjourn public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearings adjourned, regular agenda, called order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer.
Here.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilwoman Maynard.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The prayer this evening be given by Vice Mayor Gann. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My father, we thank thee for the ability to come together to work for the betterment of our neighbors and our city, to make this whole city and area a greater place in your name. Be with us as we make decisions as we move forward, that we may use the wisdom and judgment that you've given us, that we may do what is best for our citizens in our area. Go with us now in all that we do as we celebrate this Thanksgiving season, for it's in thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated September 23rd, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens like to speak? Please state your name and address, please.
Ron Young, 300 Delta Street, Clinton. And this pertains to something that was done some years ago. I'd like to see the restoration of the crosswalk from in front of my house on Delta to where it crosses across Edgewood to the sidewalk that goes up in front of Wes Harbor's house.
It used to be there?
It used to be there.
It was just paved over and never restocked or anything?
Never put back.
I'm sure. I'm sure staff will look into that, Ron. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Moving on, communications from the mayor. I don't think I have anything. Lot of stuff going on. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, except for Vaughn. Maybe I need to retire with you, Vaughn. Come on, meet me at the podium. So I have a proclamation for Vaughn Evans, Vaughn Becker, that's been a police chief and been, you've been with us for 23 years?
Thirty-three years, 37 total.
Thirty-seven total. Wow. So let me get through this proclamation. Whereas Chief Vaughn Becker has dedicated 23 years of exemplary service to the community and the police department, having served as police chief since February of 2019, demonstrating unwavering commitment to public safety and community well-being. And whereas during his tenure, Chief Becker has exemplified leadership, professionalism, and integrity, fostering a spirit of collaboration among law enforcement and the community. And whereas Chief Becker has implemented innovative programs that have enhanced community policy, policing, that's what I'm trying to say, and improved relations between law enforcement and citizens. And whereas, under his leadership, the department has achieved significant milestones, Chief Becker focused heavily on training and greatly increased the Clinton Police Department's training hours for the purpose of better service provided and assurance against liability by department actions. Chief Becker further was instrumental in purchasing rifle, ratted ballistic armor for our patrol and tactical units for increased safety for the officers. Thirdly, Chief Becker oversaw the department from 2019 through 2024, where it maintained an average case closure rate of 56.4%, where the overall state closure rate was 38.6% for that same period. The highest year under Chief Becker was 2019, where the department case closure rate was 64.2. Chief Becker was instrumental in obtaining body-worn cameras for police officers. And whereas Chief Becker has been a mentor and role model for many officers, inspiring a new generation of law enforcement professionals through his dedication and passion for service. And whereas his commitment to law enforcement, community engagement, and professionalism has left a lasting impact on the lives of countless individuals and families. And whereas Chief Becker retirement marks the end of an era and the beginning of a new opportunity for him to enjoy time with his family and pursue personal interests. Hopefully, some of that's going to be at the lake, too. Good, good. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the City Council of Clinton, do hereby recognize and honor Chief Vaughn Becker for his 23 years of devoted service, expressing our deepest gratitude for his contributions to our community and wishing him the very best in his future endeavors. This proclamation is adopted on 28th day of October, 2024.
Thank you.
Guys, don't mean to put you on the spot, but it looked like any of y'all like to say anything.
Now's your chance.
I'm Jim Kepfus, Police Chief.
When I came here, I came here from the County Sheriff's Department, and before that, I was with a large municipal police department. One of the biggest things that working here that I saw immediately was that Vaughn and I worked together as detectives under Lieutenant Quainer, and a lot of hard work was done in that investigations unit. And one of the biggest things that I saw immediately was ownership, ownership and trying to maintain the highest service possible for our community and the citizens. And when I mean service, I mean to the point that I'm getting phone calls at 10, 11 o'clock at night, wanting to know where I was, and I'm at home, and do I need to be somewhere? I just want to make sure where you're at. It's because Vaughn didn't go home. And that, to the degree that what he showed me, and I thought that maybe he had someplace there at the police department that he would sleep, but he didn't. And so, and that helped me progress to something more than what I was, because I was a little bit more of the mindset of, you know, do that, close to that eight hours of the day, you know, which is what time I was allotted to get done. But beyond that, it was a much more desire to have that ownership in this city. And that really is something that I'm happy that I experienced between Lieutenant Quainer and Vaughn during the time that I worked under them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Anyone else?
Hey, I'm Jason Stokes. I'll be brief. I just want to say, at previous places of employment, I have worked for bosses that had ulterior motives and had personal agendas that trumped what their professional agenda should have been, but here was the exact opposite. And I just want to say, I appreciate being able to work with a man for a man that put the cities and his employees' best interest first. It meant a lot to me.
Thank you, Jason. Everybody else, everybody good? You echo what everybody else says? Thank you. Thank you again, Vaughn. Under Community Reports, Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Vice Mayor Gann.
The Board of Zoning and Appeals met on October 14th. Unfinished business, John Smith requesting variance from Section 6.1 of the zoning ordinance to reduce the left side setback from 25 to 10 feet for the property. This is up in the industrial park, it's the training area. And we had already reduced the property line on the right side, and there's basically a creek or a stream bed on the other side, so that was approved. And then we approved or recommended a draft resolution for the Board of Zoning and Appeals to serve as the Board of Code of Appeals that we'll deal with later on tonight. The Regional Planning Commission met the same night. Applicant John and Kim Mallory requesting rezoning from B2 to R2 for property located at 932 Charles G. Severs Boulevard. We've dealt with this a couple of times, and there was a lot of questions about property lines and what was being asked to be rezoned and what was going to remain the way it was. And there was really nobody here to explain that, so based upon that, we decided to defer that until we could get that cleared up next month. Applicant City of Clinton requesting final plat approval for property located at 278 Frank L. Diggs Drive. This was approved, my understanding is this is preliminary for the fire station.
Fire station.
Fire station in that end of the city. And then four, three items from Alan Glessner, which was a PUD at 505 Blockhouse Valley Road, and those were approved after some sign of signatures and such, and that was passed. And then lastly, Aspire Foundation requesting preliminary PUD site plan approval for property located at 198 Cardon Road. This is a storage area and auxiliary parking, and that was approved. Any questions?
Any questions for Larry?
Larry, was that the Mallory property, was that the RV park that there was all the...
That was part of the question. You know, where were the property lines? What were they wanting rezoned? And there was anybody here to really explain it?
There was the last meeting they had.
Oh, yeah. So we...
Well, I think the issue, the big issue was, is they, you know where that old house used to be, as you pull out the subdivision to the right?
Yeah.
She owns that.
Yeah.
She combined those two lots.
Okay.
But she wanted to do an R2 on that front lot and not the back lot. It's one parcel. Am I close to that, Matt? Okay. So that was the biggest confusion and really kind of...
It's not an attempt to do the expansion of the trailer.
Well, you can't put, no, no. You can't do that anymore.
It doesn't appear to be so.
Yeah. That's been moved to around the interstate area, if you want to do something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks, Larry. Catherine?
Chief Becker, I want to give you a big congratulations on your retirement. In Scott's proclamation, he read that you are fostering a spirit of collaboration, and I just want to echo that from historic downtown Clinton. You were so patient with me as I learned how to keep people safe through all of our festivals. So thank you for advocating the importance of our festivals and keeping our community and visitors safe. I did want to thank the City of Clinton for our antique festival this past fall, and just wanted to give you a few numbers. So we had 35% larger festival than we've ever had with the amount of vendors that participated in this event, especially going down Main Street. Our artists traveled 3,500 miles to be a part of our event and to sell things in Clinton. So very excited about that. We also were featured on the Appalachian Channel during the festival, which reached about 14,000 views so far. And I gave you some information that comes from Anderson County Tourism. This is for Anderson County as a whole, but you can see in there that when a visitor comes to Anderson County, Clinton included, that they spend about $153 per person. So we looked at some placer information from tourism and visitors. So anybody who is not in Clinton that is coming to our festival, we had about 7,700 visitors come. So if you think that they're averaging about $153 per person, that's $1.1 million that was spent in Clinton at that time. So it's actually kind of creepy, because you can see where they went prior to the festival and where they went after, and you can see that they stopped at Starbucks and they went to the Walmart and some other things. So that's not just spending at the festival, that's spending in Clinton while they're coming to the festival, which I think is pretty interesting information. So, you know, while it is amazing that we can have so many people from our community come to our events, and we have so many visitors that are seeing Clinton sometimes for the first time, I think the economic development of that for the city is also of importance as well. So thank you for allowing us to continue our events and festivals. We, Christmas is a busy time for downtown, so this weekend, the Merchants Association is hoping they're hosting their Christmas open house. So they're working hard this week, a few of them are here to get ready for Christmas as that season is quickly upon us. And then we have our Christmas parade December 7th in collaboration with the city, and Small Saturday is also a day that we'd like to encourage people to be in downtown. That's it for me.
Any questions from Catherine?
I don't have a question, but I just want to tell you that the festival was amazing.
Thank you.
Emily and I, when we entered Main Street, we were walking down it, and she was like, "Mom, this might be the best festival they've done." So I think I heard that a lot as we were walking around, so congratulations on doing such an amazing job.
Well, and, you know, again, in that spirit of collaboration, it's not something that we started, so we, I hope that we can take it and continue to expand it with, from the people who did start it. We had a little bit of weather on Friday night from the festival as well, and that caused a roof to collapse for one of the businesses in downtown. But the amount of people from the street that ran in to help so that they could open on Saturday was also a beautiful thing to see, and says a lot about, I think, Clinton and its downtown.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Shayla?
Thank you, thank you. Want to give you guys a quick update. I know I gave Scott some of the handouts from ASAP, and so this is our quarterly report. We did present this to commission, but wanted to bring this to you all, too, and give you all the update. So I'll hit some of the high points, especially on this first page, with what's happening at ASAP. So this past quarter, we did attend the fair, which, in my opinion, in my fair heart of hearts, it is truly the best six days of summer, and it was amazing. It was the first time that we have had a booth inside, and we had a great turnout of getting to truly connect with our community, and we had like a wall that they could put up, what is community to you, and got to see that and just connect with them and give them resources. But more than anything, I think getting to have those personal stories and personal connections is always what it's about. So we will be back next year, which we're thrilled about. And then we have continued to host our monthly coalition meeting. We have done these a bit different this year and have seen a really great turnout. We did our school sector last month, and then today, actually, this morning, we had our first responders and law enforcement and had a great turnout, got to have some really great conversations with them about what are the different hotspots in our community? How can we impact those more? And how do we truly build that collaboration around our community? Because we can't do it alone. And so making sure that we fill those gaps with necessary resources to reach our community in the best way possible. And then on the next page, you will see an overall update about International Overdose Awareness Day. I think I told you guys a little bit about this last month, but we did release 75 butterflies for the 75 lives lost in Anderson County, which was truly beautiful, so impactful, and really appreciated those of you that came out, but also our community members and the opportunity to get to share that night with them. The next page is going to be reporting 101 from P3 Campus. This is something that we have in both Anderson County and Oak Ridge Schools, and it is the anonymous reporting system. It's state law that they have that, but just trying to get awareness back out to the community and for you all that that is available for students. It's a great opportunity for them to share something anonymously if they know something's going on in their school district or with a student. Even if they're worried about a friend, it's a great opportunity to share those concerns in that platform, knowing that there is someone on the other line from their district that can reach out to that student and provide the necessary supports, whether that be an intervention, just to check in, a friendly face, or counseling services. The school district can determine what is the best protocol for intervening in whatever situation it is that the student reports. So great platform for them to be able to use and glad that we're able to provide that to our community. The next is workforce development. We have partnered with the College of Social Work and the Masters of Public Health College at the University of Tennessee to have a consistent flow of interns coming into our office. And through this partnership, we are able to use these interns locally here in the community. You will see them oftentimes out at our different community events that we're tabling at, any resource fairs, and then we actually do some advocacy with them, show them what that looks like on the nonprofit side with local, state, and national advocacy as we go to Nashville and DC every year. And then in our community, what's been super neat is getting to see those interns come through, and then as they're leaving, you know, asking them the question of what was the most impactful thing about your internship? And it wasn't necessarily the thing that they learned, but what we've heard repeatedly is the community events and getting to connect with this community, it's so special. And I think that's something that we can all share. I know even growing up here, that's something that I have always said, is that growing up here is something that is truly special, and we live in a community that is that. And other students are coming into this community and feeling that love as well, which I think is super sweet but really unique. And so the outcomes of this has been that, out of the last three interns that we have had, two of them have remained here in Anderson County as employees. And so really excited to continue to see what this looks like. One of them is at the clerk's office, and then another one became a health educator at the health department. So truly being able to bring in top talent from UT, but also keep it here and for it to remain a part of our workforce, I think is incredible. The next is a quick update on the farm bill, just to keep you guys updated on where this has been and where we're tracking. The retail locations within 1,000 feet of a K-12 school should, is not allowed to sell HDC products unless they can provide documentation providing the location has been selling the products before December 31st of 2023. So that means that any retail location that opens up, moving forward within 1,000 feet, will have to apply for a license through the state. And then last but not least is just an overall information about our partnership with Junior Achievement and what that looks like. It's been awesome to hear how that's been going for Wendy, and just excited to see how that continues to expand with our young kids in our community, and just making sure that they know that nonprofit work is an opportunity for them. I don't think I knew that in fifth grade, and so just truly the impact they can make at such a young age. But any questions?
Any questions for Shayla?
Thank you.
Thank you. General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. The Old National Guard Army, just some updates. The Old National Guard Army, the bid advertisements and various contract documents have been completed. Dark Tech is making some final plan revisions, which are being submitted to the state for review. Once sat down, we'll be ready to go to bid, so we should be getting real close on that project. Ridgeview Drive, the alley stop installation on Ridgeview Drive at Unaca Cedar Circle intersection has been installed and was activated on October the 4th. Yarnell Road, a public meeting was held with the Yarnell Road neighborhood stakeholders on Tuesday, October the 15th, to review and discuss proposed traffic recommendations. After discussion, there were some suggestions from the residents for some potential modification to the plan. We've requested our traffic engineer to review these suggestions and incorporate them into the plan if warranted. We'll notify the residents of any of the changes of the plan before sending out ballots to vote on the final plan, as per our policy. Projects and activities for review and approval, general government, December City Council meeting, due to the holiday schedule, we recommend changing the December City Council meeting to Friday, December 20th at 1:00 PM, and this will be after the employee luncheon that's at 11:30.
Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Our TAP grant project. The TDOT TAP Grant Phase 1 and 2 Project for the Downtown Area Pedestrian and Related Improvements was advertised for bid, and bid opening was held on Monday, September 30th. The bid tabulation and award recommendation has been forwarded to TDOT for review in concurrence. We anticipate, after council's approval and assurance of the project funding, we would therefore recommend award of the TAP Grant Phase 1 and 2 Construction Contract to Adams Contracting in the total amount of $9,471,068. For clarification, this project is an 80/20 matching grant utilizing TAP grants, ARPS funds, some funding from CUB, and then our local match. And it, there's several things playing into that total funding. Like I said, we're getting about 80% of our portion of it. I have to get my tabulation sheet. Right now, the city funding parts will be around $1,122,000. CUB, they're looking at about $3,713,000 total for their part of that $9,400,000. A good portion of that $3,700,000 is coming from the ARPS fund. So we have several funding bodies to total this total project, but the total project gives the 9.4, and some change.
Do you hear a motion to award the TAP Grant Phase 1 and 2 Construction Contract to Adams Contracting LLC in the total price amount of $9,471,678, contingent on TDOT concurrence?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion?
Roger, can you give us the streets, this affects, and then Phase 3?
Yeah, Phase 1 and 2 is Market Street up to Column. We'll go past it. We will do some minor renovations from Column to the railroad tracks in-house, it's not part of the grant. And then it goes from, our portion of it goes from Market Street to Broad Street, then Broad Street to the parking lot at Family Physicians, the city parking lot there. There is some water insurance that goes on up Main Street to Column, correct? So there'll be some other work going on there. So basically, it's Column to Broad and Olive Market, and then actually, some of it loops around and gets part of Commerce Street also.
That's Phase 1 and 2.
That's Phase 1 and 2. Phase 3, which we've got the grant for that, and we are having to shift some funds around. Total project came in about 1.8 million over budget, but TDOT has suggested that we use Phase 3 funding, which is 1.3 million, and put it on Phase 1 and 2, and then we'll turn around next grant cycle, which will be next summer, and apply for Phase 3 again, in which we feel pretty comfortable that we'll get it, so...
What streets does that include, though?
That will include just Main Street, taking Sidewalk and street improvements from Broad to the new bridge. So essentially, when we get done with that, you'll have connectivity from Market Street, Downtown Area, all the way to the walking trail, Lakefront, and to the pedestrian part of the new bridge.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Roger, I guess, I mean, we still looking at, starting sometime in January?
You know, we opened these bids right before the hurricane hit, so I know a lot of the resources and contractors and stuff are moving to Upper East Tennessee. Our talk was at the bid opening that if we got concurrent tonight from City Council, that we should have within a week, maybe two weeks, the final approval from TDOT, that we'd have a pre-construction meeting sometime November, December, and hopefully get started first of the year. Now, like I said, I don't know with all the issues of Upper East Tennessee, you know, were some of these resources going to be relocated for a little while?
How long is this project going to take, that year?
They've estimated a year.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance, I'll defer to Chris.
Thank you, Roger. As of September 30th, we completed the first quarter of the fiscal year, '24, '25. Regarding revenues, we're right on track. We're about 15%, which is normal for us. It's within 7% of where we were the same time last year. We spent exactly 25% of our expenditure budget, so that's on track. Reviewing local option sales tax, we're in our second month of the reduced revenue from the audit that happened. And even with that, we're only 3% less than we were the same period last year. So that tells me that the month of August was a strong sales tax month for the City of Clinton, so...
How many months we have to go through that?
One more. One more. So, we've gotten 2/3rds of it, you know, taken back at this point, and hopefully, the rest of the year will be good enough to, to make up that difference.
Great. Any questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Well, that's all I have.
Any questions for Roger?
Hey, Roger, anything on the red light at Mariner Pole?
Yes. We got an email update, and I was, we let Bill handle that part of it, because we had some questions. We got an update last week from our traffic engineer. The traffic engineer, they have completed traffic counts, and they performed their field work portion of the survey. They're currently processing those traffic counts and working on the operation and timing analysis, and they should be actually starting the actual physical plans first of the month. So, it's on track. There's a lot that goes into it before they actually design it and get it back to us.
Sounds good.
Bill, what's it on track for? I mean, we, we said initially 6 months. Do you still think it'll be 6 months or a little bit later?
It may be a little bit later. I'm not sure material wise now, as Roger was stating with the, with the situation up in northeast part of the state, it may be longer, but it is on track for design.
Okay, thank you.
One other question, Roger. Pool? Pool?
No.
JB. Just got some redesigns for the splash pad, so hopefully, we get them approved and we'll start rolling. I think they're trying to schedule concrete, some rock, so, and some stuff's being delivered today or tomorrow for the pool, so I'm hoping.
We're moving forward pretty good. The pool walls have been actually sprayed, I guess.
Pool was formed. The splash pad's been all the.
Okay.
What was the need for the redesign?
He did things a little bit different than what the original design was, so he redesigned them through his company, and that's been the delay.
Our building inspector and code enforcement are going to keep a close eye on it and make sure he's keeping it to the plans.
Well, he needs to do it the way we want to do it. That's how I feel about it anyway. We're paying him. So, is he redesigning it to what, to what it was originally?
Yeah, everything.
So, it's almost like, it's not really a redesign, it's correction.
There's a little snafu on a few things with the original design.
Good deal to stand on top of it. Yeah, thank you.
Roger, a question. I've had some calls about, I guess it's called the halfway house next to the elementary school. Can you give the citizens an update on that and what the approval process was and who controls that, et cetera?
Well, really, there's no approval process because it is a residential area and it's a residential group home. It can't be a rehab center or a treatment center, but it's, it's some, some type of, as you said, halfway house. Of course, it's next to a school, so nobody that committed any type of sex offense could be there, and our police department has been, been watching that. But, group, group residential homes is actually state and federally protected, and we, we got in a lawsuit in the early 90s on one that went in South Clinton that we tried to deny, and we lost the case in federal court. And Bill Riggs was the main one that had to testify, so he, he knows all about it. Per your request, I did check with, with MTAAS to see if anything had changed since the early 90s, and to my knowledge, it hadn't, but it had. Actually, our state legislature passed some legislation last session that actually prevented cities from zoning these group homes out of residential areas. So, anyway, we couldn't purposely put them in that they couldn't be in R1. So, so it's kind of, our hands are kind of tied with it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Roger, I had one more. It's been, there's been some talk about the sidewalks around the spire.
Yes.
Can you just enlighten the people who are listening?
Well, kind of, lack of a word for master plan. We talked about phase 1, phase 2, and phase 3, which is connecting downtown to the bridge. Spire Park, along with some support from, from, from me and the city, had requested a few years ago from TDOT to extend a sidewalk from the Green Bridge to Yarnell Road. Year and a half ago, or so, I don't remember the exact timeframe, but the governor did approve through some of the ARPS funds, 6.6 million and some change to extend the sidewalk that'll, that'll go from the Lillen Bridge to Spire Park. So, we got a sidewalk planned there, and it's been approved. It's in the planning stage. Last time I talked to TDOT, it's been a couple of months ago. They thought it would probably be next summer, but once again, that's before everything happened in Upper East Tennessee, but that's definitely in the plans and has been approved. The city has extended the sidewalk that was started at the elementary school in South Clinton Park on up to Apple Drug. We did not take it any further than that because the traffic signal Highway Drive and Clinch Avenue, which is a state federal highway, is, doesn't have a pedestrian crossing. Six, eight weeks ago, we did request from TDOT to upgrade that traffic signal with a pedestrian crossing, and they denied the update on it. So, we kind of got shot down there. Plan B on that, we're working with, with Aspire to get a traffic signal, which I felt like from day one with this project, we probably needed it at Yarnell Road, even though it's pretty close to the one at Highway Drive. The state is considering that, my understanding. I was supposed to have a meeting Friday that got canceled. It's rescheduled for tomorrow. So, we're hoping that, that TDOT may install one on Clinch Avenue at Yarnell Road, and if they do, we'll ask for pedestrian upgrade there. And if that happens, we can extend the sidewalk on Highway Drive on down in front of Apple Drug, the Mexican Restaurant. There's enough of a right of way there, and it doesn't affect any of the businesses so that we can extend that walking trail there. So, if that, that, those pieces can fall in place, you would have sidewalks that you could get from one, one side of, of Clinch Avenue to the other, and you could walk from downtown all the way to, in theory, all the way to Highway Drive. So, there's, there's some planning going on, just pieces have to come together, and, and of course, a lot of that's on TDOT's part of the project, so we're kind of at their mercy on when they, they'll extend their sidewalk.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
I think I got it out.
Did they give a reasoning for, I'm just wondering if they gave a reasoning behind denying that crosswalk request?
Money, funds. Yeah, they, they said they, pretty much with the 6.6, they were already out of funding, plus that they could possibly adversely affect a couple of the businesses that may have to be bought out, which even makes the project higher. So, it would be a much more cost-effective project if you took it down to Yarnell if the traffic signal got put there, because you wouldn't have to take any business. And I, I really didn't look at it. I'm assuming they did on, on where it would have to go.
Okay, thanks.
Keep in mind, when you have a crosswalk, it's got to connect to another sidewalk.
Right.
You know, we've had that a couple of times over the years.
Yeah.
Thanks, Roger. Under ordinances and resolutions, second and final reading of ordinances, ordinance number 693, this is a meeting in the CMC Title V, Chapter 5, Purchasing Limits. Your motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quinn.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manis.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, ordinance number 693 passes. Under adoption resolutions, I'm sorry, that was the ordinance. It's ordinance number 693 passes on the second of, of two readings. Adoption of resolutions, resolution number 842, this is appointing the BZA as the Board of Code Appeals. Your motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion?
What does?
You want to give us like a one-minute snapshot of what that is?
He gonna do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, this is a housekeeping resolution that with the adoption of the 2021 codes, there was a need to clearly identify path of appeal for anyone who felt the need to appeal a decision of codes, or any city official for that matter, through the, through the building codes. And so, this, instead of creating a brand-new board for this, it appeared that the best option would be to re, to assign an additional duty to the BZA with caveat that they do have the ability to bring on third-party subject matter experts in, in cases that are beyond the, the technical expertise of the particular board, and the members that are present in the board do have construction experience as well as development experience and whatnot. So, I felt like it was a good path forward without having to create a new board. And so, it'll essentially be, if approved, it'll essentially have a co-agenda item on the BZA agenda anytime someone has an appeal they would like to, to hear.
If you were appealing today, who would you appeal it to? Say that we don't have that board.
Luckily, we haven't had any in the past. It was not clear, and there really wasn't a path forward that I can, that I can speak of. This, this will clearly give us a path forward going forward.
Well, also, what, what this really brought on too, just because our administrative hearing officer and have a, 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 a.
No.
Trigger, so, so to speak, to follow back on?
Not for this, not for this. It was not because of the hearing officer. I mean, sure, it was part of the larger package, but, but the hearing officer, its appeal process is through Chancery Court. This is the city's first-line appeal outside of city staff. So, if there's a code or fire code or, or some sort of plumbing code, construction code appeal that, that comes up because they disagree with the code official or a city staff member, this would be their first formal opportunity to, to appeal something that they're aggrieved by, whether it's property maintenance or whatnot. Once the BZA or code appeals, as it's known, as it's adopted in our ordinances, once they've had a chance to render a decision and formally make that decision public, the next appeal for someone is Chancery Court. So, both, both paths lead to Chancery Court at some point, but this gives us a clear path for the local appeal, and hopefully, we can resolve any issues at the local level.
Okay. Any more questions?
No.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. We had a motion is second. Further, no further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quinn.
Yes.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manis.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, resolution number 842 passes. Any old business before us? Any new business? I was going to ask Mr. Brown about our pickleball league this winter, so I'd expect a robust report next month.
I did ask him before, so I can tell you. Their plans are to start it at first of the year. He said we'd discuss it, and he was waiting on me to give approval to order the equipment, so I gave him that approval this morning. It's just some nets and, and very little equipment's needed. And this is to have some type of winter pickleball league during the day at the community center.
I would encourage, I don't know if they done yet, the Recreation Department put that on Facebook, just let, you know, let known, be known that we're offering that for those people that are pickleball enthusiasts. Dwayne, I've seen you down there a couple of times.
And the plan is not to use all the gym, because there is some people still out asking bomb staffs to take, I think we can get two or three pickleball courts out of one side of the gym.
Yeah, be great. People look forward to it. Yep. Anything else on a new business? Question to adjourn?
So moved.
Please adjourn.